Good evening. We're glad to have you tonight. Very important meeting. Just a town hall meeting. Obviously, nothing to be decided. It's nothing to be confirmed or denied or anything else. But we called it, basically. Concerned citizens who decided to have a town hall meeting. Every once in a while, I say to somebody, I say, you know, somebody ought to do something. And then I say to myself, I am somebody. And we had the meeting tonight because Lila and I have put this together. But we wanted it to be an informative meeting. I personally have been affected tremendously by the situation. Not to point fingers at any one particular entity or persons, but just overall. I probably have, has probably cost me twenty, thirty thousand dollars over the last four or five years. I deal with the homeless and the situations almost every day. Even this morning, I had to change a lock because somebody was getting in the front door, a small basement door. Ironically enough, I had a nice young lady. She says, where's the safe place? How's the neighbors here? Fortunately for that fourplex, I've got some good renters. And so I said, I think it's fairly good. And so we were talking to me else, go back to the truck. Then all of a sudden, there was two homeless people dragging their suitcases and whatever. It does affect us all. What's the answer? We'll ask the city hall, the council people, to determine that. We're going to be looking at some ordinances. And we, we just felt we needed to have an informal meeting just to try to get the facts and try to get the information and try to get you to be informed. Lila?
Thank you, Dale. My name's Lila Bartle Webber Meyer. I grew up in Rolla and like Dale said, we, I became involved in this issue whenever there was a proposed change in expansion that would have impacted my family significantly and their small business and their commercial property. Since then, we followed this issue pretty closely. And in following it closely, we've kind of learned a lot. And what we're doing today, like, or tonight, like Dale said, is we're wanting to inform. We're not trying to condemn. We can all agree that there's a problem. We will probably never agree on what the problem is, whether it's an entity, whether it's unfair wages, whether it's unaffordable housing, whether it's drug addiction. We will probably never agree what the actual root cause of this problem is, but we could all agree that there's a problem. And we're never going to come together as a community to solve this problem if we can't have a discussion like we're going to have tonight. This is going to take a community to create a solution. And right now, the solutions are in play, meaning we have a proposed ordinance. It's a draft of an ordinance that is going to be going through our planning and zoning. It's also going to be going through our city council. Wherever you fall on this issue, however you've been impacted by the issue, however you've volunteered for this issue, this is going to impact our community. And the current proposed ordinance, we put on the chairs, and that's what we really wanted to make you aware of tonight. Like Dale said, this is an informative meeting. And it's not to villainize anybody. It's not to villainize if you have had a negative experience with an unhoused person. It's not to villainize unhoused. It's not to villainize those who help unhoused. It's to, there is a conversation happening. And if you want to be a part of the conversation, we're just wanting you guys to know that it's happening right now. So the proposed ordinance that we believe is going to impact our community significantly and in our personal beliefs, which could be different from yours, and that's okay, just like I said, we can have differing opinions, is there is going to be, what's proposed is that any emergency shelter, they're defined in the first piece of this, can be in any C2, C3, or manufacturing zone district. Now, what does that mean? If you don't know where you're at in a zone, we did bring a zoning map of Rolla so you can see if you wanted to go look over here. But that means that any shelter services, again, defined there, could by right go in C3, by conditional use permit, which is less rigorous than a planned unit development, could go in a commercially zoned area. That's the heartbeat of our businesses. That's the heartbeat of Rolla. That's our small businesses. C2 zoned areas are our small businesses. C3 are large areas, but it also, Paul's Furniture, if you guys know where Paul's Furniture is, that's a C3 zoned area. So you also have C3 right next to C2, and then you have your manufacturing. So the proposed ordinance is manufacturing in C3 by right and the C2 by conditional use permit. Now, this also means that any of these services at any time, there are some restrictions in there, could go in in any of these placences anytime, meaning we wouldn't just have one emergency shelter, and I know that we have several here in town, but we could possibly have numerous ones. Now, whether you think that's part of the solution that we should be discussing or whether you think that that's not great for our town, it's a conversation that's occurring right now. So we wanted to first inform you that planning and zoning will be discussing this on June 14th, and we encourage you all to go and be a part of this. You obviously care, or you wouldn't be here. City council meeting, the next city council meeting, I just slipped the date in my head. I don't know when it is. June 14th is the planning and zoning. We'll get that date for you. But this is, June 6th? June 6th is the next city council meeting, and we encourage you to come and tell your stories or advocate or just listen. We have invited several people here, and actually, I'm really happy. Ashley Brooks from the mission is actually here. Again, this isn't to villainize anybody, and she bravely has agreed to come up and sit, which we all know that this can turn ugly, so let's please keep it as professional as possible and as kind. I know many of you in this room, and we are a very generous community. I know that many of you have been impacted by addiction. I know many of you have housed unhoused people. So this is not to attack anybody's character, but it doesn't change the fact that, I mean, for example, like Mr. Wans, he has had several thousand dollars worth of damages from this issue. We have businesses that are definitely impacted from this issue. You hear story after story that are impacted from this issue. It most definitely has impacted some of the businesses in the downtown area, their property values, and they're unable to sell their, their commercial property, which is their livelihood. So you can't deny that there's an impact, and it's a negative one at that, especially for small businesses. Again, that's our personal, that's our personal experience on how we've dug into this issue. We also have here our city council members, and we, when we do open it up for questions, and I don't know if our city council members who were able to come can stand, they're here to listen and to be a non, like, non, are they going to stand or are you guys going to hide from me? Thank you, thank you. So they are here just to listen and to hear from their community and represent their words well. We ask that you don't direct any questions to them to compromise their integrity and their position as, as a city official, that if you do have something that you want to talk to them about, we encourage you to reach out to them. And we also encourage you to go to city council. So if there's, are there any questions for me? And then we're going to kind of hand it over to our panel here that have facts that can address issues that you have or questions that you have in a minute. So do you guys have any questions for me? Yes?
Are there any residential properties that are next to commercial property?
Yes, there is. There's actually many residential areas that are butted up right next to a C2 or a C3 zoned area. So again, if you want to come over here and look at this map and kind of find where you're located and see how this would impact you, and, you know, for, just to, just to be informed. Does anybody else have any questions? Yes?
Are you going to allow the mission to do this?
So as far as me personally allowing any...
Personally, I don't just want to be able to do that.
I don't know. So that is something that would be between the mission and the sellers of the Jordan Motors. Obviously, the south side business owners of that area are opposed to the move because they do believe and we, with a high degree of confidence that it would impact their businesses negatively, which is their livelihood. So we have retained counsel to fight that fight if that does end up getting that way.
The housing there is there?
Yes, there is. Yes. But as far as like us personally, we can't prevent anything. We're going to do what we can to protect our small businesses. And again, that is our view of how we view this issue. That's not condemning other people's view on this. Any other questions for us? Okay. So I'm going to pass it over to Dale to introduce the people that we've invited. Again, thank you, Ashley, for being here. She is very brave to sit up here because, and please just be kind, considerate. And we're going to open it up for our panel to discuss the unhoused issue, and we are just wanted to inform that this could impact. Oh, I have one other thing. Sorry. This is a legal, if you do feel so that you, how many, let me just ask this. How many people own commercial property in Rolla? Raise your hand. If you feel as if you would be negatively impacted by this, and only if you feel that way, we do have legal petitions to oppose this ordinance, that this is not the correct place for any of these shelter services. You can pick one up. You just have to have it notarized, and you can send it to the address on the pre-posted stamp envelope at the end. So you can just fill this out and have it notarized, and then that can be used if this does get to that, that place. And it, only if you feel called to do so. Right, I'm going to pass it back over to Dale.
Okay. Okay, again, we're glad that you're here, and we're glad our panel is here. And we have Ken Garrett up here, and also then Chief Fagan is here, and Tina Davis from Grace. Grace has been around for a long, long time. And then we have our sheriff, Curran, here tonight. And I want to ask Ken to come up, just ask him about, he called me the other day and wanted to know if he could speak a little bit, ask him about five minutes or seven minutes. And then we want to give the other opportunity here, and I think with, after Ken, we'll just go down the line, Chief Fagan, and then Tina, and then sheriff can wrap it up. And then if you all won't take enough time to do what you need to do, but we want to have time for questions as well. Closer? Is that better?
Start over.
You want me to start over?
Yeah.
You know what's going to happen, okay? So we're okay. Go for it.
Can you all hear me without the microphone? Okay. I'm going to start out with a statement, then I'll introduce who I am. Being homeless or transient is not a crime. There is no law that requires citizens to donate to the shelters or there's no prohibiting them right now. The question is, being homeless does not give you a justification to commit crimes. So there's a difference between homelessness and transience. People that come here to commit crimes, people that really deserve to be helped. When I moved here from Fort Hood in 2003, I donate to local populations. So I donated to the mission. They used to do showers, and I think you got a shower and you could wash your clothes. I actually donated new clothing, not trying to trump, toot my own horn or anything, because it was about taking care of the community. But things have changed. My background, I don't live in Rolla. I live in Phelps County. But this is not a Rolla problem. This is a Phelps County problem. This transcends this whole area. Every time that you come to town, a lot of you are concerned about your safety. And I'm going to give you a brief story about how I was assaulted by a person from Texas, okay? This is just two years ago. Bottom line is, I've been in law enforcement for 32 years. I have a bachelor's in public administration and criminal justice, have a master's in business and organized security, and I worked at an embassy as an anti-terrorist officer. That don't mean jack. The thing that matters is my ability to predict crime and how to mitigate crime. My job was based on my ability to suppress crime. If I didn't do it on the post I was on, I got fired, okay? So I've been doing this for 30 something years. I write doctrine for the MP school. Bottom line is, I have lived in eight states, three countries, and I've never seen a homeless problem like it's erupted since its last couple of years. I lived in Chicago as a boy. That was back in the 60s and 70s, but it wasn't that bad. This is a national epidemic. We can't fix what's happening, but we can control what's happening in our little area here. I can't take care of the rest of Missouri. And I'm going to throw out some facts. Every fact that I'm throwing out comes from the FBI crime database, and you'll be shocked about where we live. I did law enforcement on Fort Campbell. I was the chief of police there. Seventy thousand people, 35,000 were trained killers, okay? Then I did Fort Hood, Texas. We, I owned half of Fort Hood, 50,000 people, about 25,000 trained killers. And then when we invaded Panama, we collapsed their government. There was no police force. I helped stand up the first police force in Panama. Over 4,000 plus people, 24,000 people now. That was in the ground. I was doing three murders a day, okay, on the shifts. We had 210 cops on the day, every day. So that's my background, where I talk from. So when I moved here from Fort Hood, first thing I did was, I had a choice between Lebanon, Rolla, the fort, and St. Roberts. I chose Rolla, had the lowest crime rate in the FBI database, had the best schools, okay? Housing was high, but you look for that location. If I had to do that same choice today, I would not choose Rolla. I'd choose the lake, okay? So some other things, just so you know, if you go the FBI database, Rolla is now in the top 10% of the nation for crime. Our crime rate for 2020 is 114%, above the national average. That is double the national average. So, okay? Missouri, we're doing a little bit better in Missouri because Missouri has so many towns that are worse than we are, okay? Especially Springfield's number one, just so if you want to know. St. Louis is a close two. So the other thing is, on March the 9th of 2020, I was at a business in downtown Rolla at lunch. A man walks in, he looks at me, and he goes, blank you, I'll give you the explanatory in your mind. He reached back, and I saw a big black object. I thought he had a gun. I usually carry a gun with me in Rolla because it's so high crime, but I just left the school where Matt Friendly works at, so I didn't have a gun there. And if I had not, had that gun, I would have killed that man that day. He came from Texas, made it all the way through St. Louis, warrants all over the place, okay? But he gets here, and he comes in, throws a rock, a chunk of asphalt, at me. I'm going to just have to put it out. He walked up from the mission. We have witnesses, we have court documents, and he threw that rock at me. I was not supposed to be there that day. There was two women at back, and if those two women had been there by themselves, one of them would have caught that rock in the face, or worse, because he was bent on hurting somebody. Unfortunately, he's 5'9", I'm 6'4", so he took off and ran, chased him down the railroad tracks because I was angry. I'm 60 years old, so I don't run that fast anymore, a 30-year-old guy. He started throwing rocks at me from the railroad tracks. Later that day, they caught him trying to break in the vehicle over 72 at the park over here, okay? This is where all y'all people walk and stuff and play baseball and softball. And they asked him, who'd you throw the rock at? I threw it at some, we're going to use the word, a minority prostitute, okay? Female minority prostitute. So I've never been called a lot of things, but that's the first time I've been called that, okay? So the thing was, they asked him, where do you live? I live at the mission, okay? When I made that statement, I got hounded by people telling me, that's not true, he wasn't there. Well, I have an expartia order from a judge in Phelps County that's saying he was there, basically evidence from the cops and stuff. Have any of y'all ever tried to get an expartia orders or restraining order? Have y'all ever tried to get one? I was in the room with eight other women, myself, me and one other woman got an expartia order. They had to come back again. I've never seen a process like that. The judge was doing everything he could, and I was angry. So I said, I'm going to take up this mission here because, you know, if that was my wife in the room, and he would have killed her. The thing is, the worst part is, if I'd had my gun that day, there's no doubt in my mind I would have killed him. I was, well, I was from me to you, ma'am, that close to him, and it would not have gone well. So a human wife is there because a guy should have never been here. So this man was arrested in Texas back in 2018, November, and he assaulted police officers. Somehow, he made it to Warren County, got arrested there, then he made it. Within 16 months, he moved from Texas all the way back to Rolla, up to St. Louis to Rolla, with no funds, no car, no nothing. So how did they do that? Well, I can let you do this. Go back and look at the notes of the city council meetings from May through July, where the mayor admits he called other municipalities, and they are paying people to get on the bus. They give them cash, they give them, say, hey, y'all would like to leave here? We're going to give you cash if you'll go to Rolla, because we don't have room for you. And they give them that to the mission. You can go look it up yourself. That's what the mayor said. He talked to them, and they said, because we have a mission, we'll send them there. So the thing is, the mission could serve a great purpose, but the question I've got is, why is there no background checks on these people when they get here? Okay? So how many of us, if we work in school, we, I got, I got stage one cancer, so I have to drink a lot of water, so sorry. Thank you. So if I were to go apply for a job as a scoutmaster or any most other jobs, I'd do a background check. Why would we accept people that are in unknown qualities, okay? Whereas true people here too, why are we accepting people that are not from Phelps County? We can't save the world. Excuse me? Okay, oh, sorry. It's like I said, I was giving a briefing to joint staff one day, and one of the generals said, we're not trying to solve world hunger. We're trying to feed a few people, okay? So let's focus up on our county, and if we can do that correctly, then we can make bigger things. But it is not our responsibility to take on the criminals. And I'm going to ask, put it this way, I'm talking to the chief, the sheriff here. So the guy that I got, you know, the rock thrown at me, the piece of asphalt, he stayed in jail for two months before his family from Texas came to see him. $65 a day approximately, okay? Over $1,800 a month, okay? Or no more than that. So it's over $7,000 of your tax money went to a guy that should have never been here. How often does that happen? Then we have the people with the property crimes, and I know dozens of them. They're not only in the city, they're in the county too, okay? And most of the time, we take care of ourselves. I'll be honest with you. So the thing is, what is the scope that we're trying to get here? Are we trying to solve everything? And like the mayor said, I'll read you the quote from the mayor, if y'all didn't see it, because I don't read newspaper a lot either. Sorry. This is a quote from the mayor from February 2022. "It's unfortunate that people are homeless, and we need to remember that for whatever reason underlying their homelessness, they're still fellow human beings." That's true. Some of these people need a hand up, some of them want a handout. Some of them need a form of treatment. The guy that I had was certifiable mental, okay? He was just crazy, okay? This is a complex issue, and it's not solvable, it's not a solvable issue. At best, we can only manage parts of it. The mission does, they're managing a part of it and not trying to solve the whole problem either. On the other hand, we cannot turn a blind eye to the increase in property damage, littering, actual and perceived safety concerns, increased cost to police, and to the hospital. I was in the fire a couple of years ago, and I waited for 45 minutes with my skin falling off to get through the line of all the people trying to get drugs there. Now, I'm going to be honest with you, truth and lending. I'm from the South. If I had to go for a, the Mississippi Penal System said I couldn't go to the reunions anymore because you couldn't put that many felons together in a group. So that's my people are all in prison for drugs, and that's just a thing of fact of life. But he also said, sorry, I'll call close up. If you build it, they will come, demand a bit. The only thing I'm asking for are some prudent controls to make sure we weed out the evil people that shouldn't be here and make sure that we don't give driver's licenses, you can go look that up, to people that are not Missouri residents, because there's a law that says a shelter can give a address, and you can go get a driver's license and vote. And if you get arrested, I'll show you the quote from the, just go look it up in the Mississippi code, or Missouri code. Sir, thank you. Sorry, thank you much. Did I answer questions or not?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take it.
Just for information and not at all of judgment, have you been inside the mission?
Yes, I have. I went the day after, the day I got assaulted, I went to the judge, filed a restraining, then I went there. It took me forever to find somebody that was in charge, to be honest with you. They said, oh, there's somebody over here, and it wasn't there. And I can tell you this, half the people in there were strung out, and they were high. I'm a cop for 30 something years, and there's no, yes, it is.
That's true.
Okay. If y'all want to be rude, be rude. Go ahead.
You said that Rolla was number 10 in the, in the crime...
We're in the top 10% of the nation.
Top 10%.
St. Roberts is, they're right along with us.
I see a lot more on their corners than I do on...
They're right up there with us, ma'am. Missouri is one of the tops in the nation. We're very, very high, okay? And if you want to, I'll give you, go to the FBI crime database, all you got to do. This is the input that our police officers put into the database. It's not stuff we made up. It's every crime they put in there.
So go ahead.
Sorry.
We'll just have questions afterwards, let everybody speak first, please. I'll get out of your way, sir. Do you want to go this way or what, Dale?
I'm going to go. Colonel, I want to thank you for painting such a rosy picture of the city of Rolla. I really appreciate that. I don't think anybody here has been more impacted by the homeless problem in Rolla than the Rolla Police Department. We spend a lot of time answering calls. We spend a lot of time dealing with the homeless. But with that being said, I just want to get a few things clear out here, okay? One homeless is not the same as another homeless. We have a lot of people that are homeless for reasons that are not of their control, okay? Probably 90% of the homeless people are homeless for less than two months. Our problem, and the mission's problem, is that 10% left over. That 10% are the homeless people that don't want help. All they want to do is get a free meal and do their drugs and go out and commit nuisance crimes, property damages, things like that. You know, you said that the mission needs to start keeping track. Well, they are, all right? We've had a lot of meetings with the mission. The mission now, if you go to the mission and you want to use their shelter, have to identify yourself. They run them through the sex offenders database, they contact probation and parole, and the people have to leave their name, their date of birth, and a photograph. And my officers or myself and any time to go down there and say, I want to see all the people that are staying here right now, and they provide it to us. So they're actually working with us very hard. The problem is, is that there's a lot of people that have been kicked out of the mission. You see, when you go to the mission now, they have, they sign you up for a program. You have to sign up with this program, and that program is, they work to get you housing, they work to get you employment. If you don't want to play along with them, if you don't do this program, you're not allowed at the mission. And there's a lot of people that have been trespassed from the mission, which means they're kicked out. These are the people that are causing us problems. The mission is not asking for these people to come in. For a while there, we were having a real problem with other, other cities dropping their problem people off at the mission.
That was real.
That was real. Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. It was, it was happening. It's not anymore. The cities that have been doing it, I got in contact with the chiefs, I got in contact with the sheriffs and had long discussions with them. You know, they were on the understanding, like, I'm going to say, for instance, and I don't mean to call them out, but Dent County, they were dropping people off. I called the Dent County sheriff, and I said, quit dropping your problems off in Rolla and at the mission. And he said, well, that's the only shelter in the Ozarks. And I told him, it's not a shelter, it's a food place, it's for people from Phelps County. And right now, the people they serve, 70% of them are from Phelps County. The other 20% are people that come up here through hospitals, you know, when they get, when they, they go to a hospital for a psychiatric thing, and when they leave the hospital, they got no place to go, so they're here. There is this organization, and I hope they were here, I'd love to talk to them, Life Changers, they're called. They used to be in Rolla, and what these people do is they would take people in under the guise that we're going to help you with your drug addiction. But what they really did was they put them out on street corners with signs because they had to earn their keep. They put them in front of Walmart. They're still in front of Walmart. If you ever go to Walmart and you see the little table with all the religious trinkets, those people are not there because they want to be. They're there because they're supposedly being treated, and they have to earn their keep. If you don't want to play along with them, if you don't want to stand on a street corner, if you don't want to sell your trinkets, they kick you out. Right now, on the average, the mission is getting three people from Life Changers a Right now, on the average, the mission is getting three people from Life Changers a month. And these people are from all over the country. Once again, not the mission's fault. You know, has the mission brought some people into town? Absolutely, but not from anything that they've done. It's from other organizations. And like I said, I've gotten a hold of most of them. We had, there was a, down in Kabul, there is a, a Russian organization that serves people from Russia for drug addiction. The minute they mess up there, they were literally driving them to the mission, from Kabul, Missouri, driving them to the mission and dropping them off. And I think every one of them people were a problem down there, a big problem. And it took me forever dealing with this thing. Well, finally got them to stop dropping these people off, as I told them I was gonna send INS down to their place and check out all their employees. And they've decided not to drop, they, they have not dropped anyone off recently because of that. Yes. Yeah. Somebody asked about the rainbow. The rainbow people, what they are as an organization, but they're all in Mark Twain National Forest. So they're outside of the actual city of Ralla, so that's gonna have to be something that the sheriff talks about. The sheriff and I are working very hard to combat these problems that we have. And like I said, the people that we deal with are the same people over and over and over again. Because the crimes we get them on are what they call minor misdemeanor nuisance crimes. People don't go to jail for those, they get a ticket. And with the ticket, they get a court date. And right now, I have, all of my officers have a zero tolerance for crimes like this, for the homeless people breaking into cars, breaking into businesses, and we write them tickets. Give them a court date, they never show up for their court date. So eventually, they're gonna end up with warrants. And when they got warrants, then they can go to jail, and the jail, they can stay in jail because they don't have money to make their bonds. But it's a process, it's as frustrating for us as it is for everyone here. We work with the prosecuting attorney. If you own a vacant building and somebody breaks into it, that's trespassing. But if they commit a crime when they're in there, it becomes burglary, which is a serious felony. The prosecutor has gone as far as to tell us if they use water from the water tap, that's stealing water. If they plug their phone in and charge it, they're stealing electricity. And he's actually issuing burglaries on those. So we even got them working with us right now. So the police department's trying everything they can with this. And you said that right now, we're the tenth highest, or in the top ten percent? Well, I was looking at our stats in Part One Crimes, which are the things that we send to the FBI, last from the year two thousand and twenty to the year two thousand and twenty-one, we went down twenty-three percent in Part One Crimes. So if we're top ten. Part One Crimes are homicide, rape, robbery, kidnapping, arson, burglary, and larceny. But the burglary and lar, the larceny is a felony larceny, larceny. So it's not breaking into a car and stealing fifty cents worth of change. That's what we call, it's a crime, and if it happens to you, it's the biggest crime in the world. But from our standpoint, it's what we call a nuisance crime. If they break a window, yeah, we treat them serious, but God forbid you leave your car unlocked and leave, you know, your computer or your cell phone sitting in it, which is happening all the time right now. I keep trying to tell people, lock your cars at night, okay? It's, it's, that's, and I know, we live in Ralla, we shouldn't have to lock our cars. And I've said that from the minute I've got here. But people are people. You know, I spent thirty-three years in St. Louis, and when I came out here, I thought this was gonna be a retirement job, it was gonna be easy for me. Farthest from the truth, people are people, no matter where you live, and they're gonna be acting a fool. This goes for the homeless, this goes for the people that aren't homeless. You talked about the homeless that feigned pulling a gun on you and threw a brick in the window. I could probably give you fifteen cases of people who live in houses in town that have done the same thing. Yes, it was a homeless that was doing it, yes, he came up here from Texas. A lot of people come from other states out here, but this is America, we can't stop people at the border. Yes, I'll, matter of fact, I have them written out here, most of them. It's reported. She wanted to know if that Part One Crimes was reported or was convictions. This is reported, I have no control over convictions. Once we get a warrant issued in the courts, it's completely out of our hands. Then it's in the prosecution phase of it. So I can tell you some of the big crimes, we haven't lost a big crime in court in, forever. The only, the last big crime I had that we lost in court was the policeman who assaulted somebody. Yeah, no, no, once it's reported, we have to send it to the FBI. Somebody calls up and says, "I was robbed," we gotta send that to the FBI. We do our investigation, we make an arrest, we get a warrant, and the guy goes to court. Yes. No, no, every crime that gets reported gets on the thing. But I'm gonna tell you something right now, and I'm not doing this to brag or anything, but I came from a department where I thought we had the best detective bureau in the world. These guys were rock stars. And I came here, and when I came here, I honestly have to tell you, I thought, wow, it's a small town, you know, I don't know what we're gonna get. But our detectives out here are hardworking. We do not have an open, serious felony that has not been solved by them right now. These guys are doing a great job. They wanted me to talk about the, uh, the nuisance crimes, so I'm just gonna go over some numbers here. Burglaries from, this is from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, averaging out the calls for the first four months of the year, okay? Burglaries are down thirty-one percent. We've had forty of them reported so far this year. Property damage is up two point three three percent, with forty-four of those reported this year. Disturbances are down eighty percent, we've only had one call for a disturbance. Now, I don't know if that's, but there's a lot of other calls that could be, like, maybe look like, just like a domestic violence. Our domestic violences are up six percent, we've had a hundred and thirty of them so far this year. That's a real problem we have in this area, but that, that's not a homeless problem, that's all over the place. Drug paraphernalia, arresting for people for having syringes, meth pipes, things like that, is actually down twenty-seven percent, we've had twenty-four of those. Fight progresses, fights in progress are up twenty-five percent, we've had fifteen of those so far. Harassments are up eight percent, with fifty-four. Intoxicated persons are up fifteen percent, we've had thirty-eight of those so far this year. Now, unfortunately, I don't have these broke down if they're homeless or not. I can tell you exactly how many homeless calls we've had, because we identify the call as involving a homeless, but we don't break it down by this, so. Liquor violations, we've had two this year so far, and we had two this time last year, so there's no change in that at all. Littering is up a hundred and thirty-three percent, that's a nuisance crime. But with that being said, that's only seven calls that we've had for that from last year. Miscellaneous mischief, which is what we kind of put everything that we don't know how to classify it, is up a hundred percent with six of those. Mental health calls are up nine percent, we've had ninety-one of those. Those are some of our problem people that don't want help, don't get help, you know, when they're all whacked out on their, their drugs or their meth. You know, we put them out as mental calls because they're acting out of control. Well, this, I'm just trying to tell you, because the colonel here mentioned that, you know, like littering's way up. Well, littering is way up. Okay, I thought you did, I'm sorry. But you said, I said feigned pulling a gun on you, acted like he pulled a gun on you. Let me, let me talk about, I'll, I'll go into the homeless, okay? Homeless calls here. We do have a lot of people with mental health in our community. A lot of the mental health problems are caused by the drugs. People actually have mental health problems, and those people, we try to help, we try to get them as much help as we can. See, the problem is right now, is the biggest problem we have right now is methamphetamine. It's coming up through the open borders down south, and it is so pure that people do what we call have methamphetamine hallucinations, is that right? Completely out of control. You know, when you're looking at them, you think, this person's crazy, this person's got a mental health condition. Not to say anything bad about people with mental health, but that's not a mental health, it's a drug problem. So I don't want to get, yes, it is, but it. Yeah, we've never had, this is something new, the meth-induced psychosis. We've always had problems with meth, and let me tell you, when I first got here, we have a drug unit. And if they got a half an ounce of methamphetamine, it was a unbelievably huge arrest, that was huge. Now, every time they do a search warrant, they're getting pounds of methamphetamine. Not only methamphetamine, but pure methamphetamine. I mean, everybody's seen Breaking Bad, the blue methamphetamine, it's like that. It is so pure that it's literally frying these people's brains. And, you know, we try to get them help, but the problem with drug addiction is you have to want to get help. The people that want help, we get them. And the people that want help, we get, we have more resources in this town through our CIT program that we can get people any help that they want. The problem is, is we gotta have the people want to get the help. And the ten percent that I'm talking about are the people that don't want help. They want to use their drugs, they want to get a free meal, and they want to go live on the street. I'm, I'm saying this by, well, let me talk about data here, I got homeless data, okay? Okay, for homelessness, in two thousand twenty-one, we answered five hundred and seventy-seven calls involving homeless. Four of those were medical calls, twenty-seven were what we call check the wellbeings. Somebody sees somebody passed out on the street, it's a check the well-being, and we go to it. We had fifty-six field interviews, that's my officer stopping people that are acting suspicious that end up being a homeless person. We had one harassment, four mental health calls, five stealing calls, we had one suicide of a mental health person. We had two fires caused by homeless. I'm sorry, I said mental health, I'm, I mean homeless. We had two fires caused by homeless, and they were residents that were burned. I mean, they were arsons. We found out who did them, that person has been arrested, and he's going through the process right now. We've had five litterings by homeless, thirty-five loiterings, and I don't know how we're doing these loiterings, because we do not have a loitering ordinance in the city of Ralla. I've tried to get one passed, but they will not let us pass it. There is a state loitering ordinance, and that's probably what they're resting on. But for the city of Ralla itself, we do not have that ordinance. Suspicious activity involving homeless, we've had fifty-six calls. We've had thirty-two trespassings, that's usually what that is, is a vacant building that somebody's taken up residence in. One intoxicated person, one prowler, and one weapons violation. So like I said, five hundred and seventy-seven calls involving homeless. And I know that seems like a lot, but in two thousand twenty-one, we had fifty-six thousand calls to our police department. So it's five hundred and seventy-seven calls is a lot of calls, but when you're looking at the big picture for a year, fifty-six thousand calls, we, we're not going to a homeless call all the time. Average time right now, we're averaging at forty-five minutes. When we have a call with a homeless, that's average. Some of them we handle very quickly, some of them take hours. So I'm just figuring out the average here. And yet, it's gotta be two officers. With a homeless thing, we always send two officers. Nowadays, we send pretty, two officers pretty much to every call just for safety reasons. Nowadays, you know, we want to be safe. So when we do have one of these calls, we do spend a lot of time at it, but, yes. It's about the same, it, it just depends. You know, if we get a burglary at a house, we might spend three or four hours there, when you talk about the processing and everything else. I'm just trying to average out them, those calls, yes, ma'am? No, the mission doesn't do that because, quite frankly, I don't have the manpower to do that. And in the state of Missouri, we just can't run somebody because they want to go to a shelter. We have to have a legal reason to run a person. I actually, where I came from, we had a thing called Regis, where you can run anybody, a policeman wanted to. I've actually, several times, have gone down to my dispatch, and I say, "Hey, run this person for me." And they will ask me, "What do you want to run him for?" And I'll say something smart ass and say, "'Cause I'm the chief, that's why." And they go, "No, that's not good enough, we need a reason." So you have to have a reason to run somebody, and. Is that in St. Louis City, or Springfield, or? Okay, because like I said, with Regis, it doesn't take anything to run somebody through Regis. But here, we use mules, which is the Missouri system, and mules, pardon me? There you go. Right, you have to have. Yep. We, we are running, the shelter here is running people through the sex crime database, which is the important thing, if they're on a sex crime database, they don't stay at the shelter. They're coming to stay, to become a shelter, person that stays at the shelter, then they run them through the database, they contact probation and parole to tell them if they're a parolee. And they have the ability to run somebody through CaseNet, which is a Missouri criminal thing. They can do that too, whether they do that or not, I don't know, but they are, they are vetting the people that are going there now. Which is something new, because. Somebody asked her, "When did the mission start running people?"
Yeah, so we have always ran people through our sex offender database. We were doing it after they came into the shelter. And this is why these conversations are so important, because a couple of years ago, we got some feedback from our community members that we should do this before. And so we developed some systems and processes, and so now we run people through before. And that's been for, hmm, maybe about a year or so. But it's also important to keep in mind, we're a young organization. We've been doing our emergency shelters since two thousand sixteen. And so we started with what's called a low-barrier shelter. And those have been proven to be the most effective. So that's the model we were following. And I had gone to other communities, I had gone to St. Louis and to Springfield to look at what their shelters were doing, what worked, and then take, took those models and brought them to Ralla and kind of tweaked them for what would work in our community. And so all of the changes that we made have been made through following research, researched methods on what works, and then also listening to our community and making sure that we're always being safe. And so, yeah, so now, before anybody even comes into our shelter, we run their name through the sex offender database. We, yeah, okay, I had a few things that have been, that I wanted to address, so I'm gonna address those too. And so we also, our second question is, are you from Phelps County? Where were you living when you became homeless? And if they're not from Phelps County, we say, "Well, are, do you have a job here? Do you have a family member here that you can stay with in a couple of days?" And if the answer to that is no, then they are not allowed to stay in our shelter. And the part of that, the reason for that, is because we want people to be where they are going to be the most successful. And they're not going to be successful if they're not in the community where they have all of their resources, where their doctors are, their pharmacy, their family, their friends. And so because of that, eighty, it's eighty percent of the people in our shelter are from Phelps County, and the other twenty percent are incidental for all those reasons that chief named. Right, so that is part of being a low-barrier shelter. So a lot of shelters and communities have a big problem with homelessness because they are so high barrier, you have to have an ID before you even come into the shelter. How are you supposed to get an ID if you don't have an address? And so that's what. And so that's when we p- bring in people, we help them get an ID. So no, we don't know 100% of the time, like, oh, yes, they're saying they're from Phelps County, but they're not. However, we don't start it out by saying, hey, just so you know, if the answer to this question is no, you're not gonna be able to stay here. We say, are you from Phelps County, yes or no? And so then we go from there. However, if we get them in, because day one, people are entered into our case management program, if we find out, like, they're from, let's say, this has never happened, but if it would, like, let's say, oh, I'm from St. Louis, but I lied and I said I was from Phelps County, actually don't have any ties here, then we would say, okay, well, let's get you a bus ticket back there, and we would pay for it.
How do you, and I think this is the question, like, we all know that there is the problem of the nuisance, right? Where they aren't from Phelps County, they are transient, they're committing these nuisance crimes, and that's really what's impacting our businesses. I mean, you see pictures, I think just recently, there was a Facebook post of a camp where they had a fire behind a residence. And then there was several pictures that I saw just recently of downtown where people were boarding up businesses downtown and sleeping behind downtown. Obviously, that perceived as your issue, because you're the mission and you turn those people away. How do you feel, like, together as a community, because we are small businesses, we do have investments, this does impact our livelihood, how do you feel that expanding the mission services, at least that's how it's being perceived, by wanting to move to a larger location, to wanting to be able to have more people stay overnight? How do we prevent this from happening as a community? I mean, we're, we are a community. This obviously doesn't look good for you, this isn't great for our businesses. So how, what, what kind of discussion, I mean, and how do we get to a solution for this? So if they're not from Phelps County, they came because of the mission and now they're no longer at the shelter.
That's not true, no.
I'm just sorry.
No, that's not true. Yeah.
My, well, for example, like what Chief said, they came from, I was referencing what he was saying.
Right, but that's been put to an end.
Sorry, I thought I was yelling. Apparently not. Um, I think there's another one here. I think that, um, sorry, my question was that if we had people that are turned away from the mission, it's perceived unfortunately as a mission problem. And like, like I said, I'm glad that you're here so we can clarify, we can come to a solution. Or, not solution, I don't think we're gonna solution here, but a discussion. My question was, how do you solution for that? If they're not a Phelps County resident or they don't pass and now they're left in Phelps County? What, what, and my perceived, uh, issue is that you build it, they will come, like the mayor said. And then also, like you said, there was for a while, people coming from other areas because of the mission. So I wasn't saying that as in the mission was drawing this, I was just quoting what Chief Fagan had said. So how, what's, what's the solution? I mean, especially if you're going to expand services.
Right, so first of all, we are not expanding services. I'm, we never said that, that was never part of the plan.
I was just referencing the Phelps County Focus where it was talked about expanding services by moving to Jordan Motors.
Okay, they also issued a correction on that title.
I did not see that, okay.
Okay, yes, they did, because I reached out to them and I said, nowhere in anything did it say that we were expanding services. And they apologized and said that, and they issued a correction right away. They put it online and in the paper too. So we are not expanding services at all, that was never the plan. And if you've been in the mission, you will notice, we are in half of a church basement. We are cramped. Our kitchen is the size of this table. And we're serving almost 3,000 meals a month out of it to our community. We were just wanting a little room to breathe. That was, that was all, it was never part of the plan to expand services and is not. And so that was, we just needed a bigger building so that we didn't have four people sharing an office this size. We are cramped, and so that's all that was. And so the other part of your question was, what's our plan to? So we're, we've been working with the police department really well. Chief Fagan is really great, I always call him the heavy, he's my heavy. So if we're having an issue, so with people coming from other communities, I will try to take care of it first myself by calling whatever agency is referring. And then if that doesn't work, then I bring in Chief Fagan and that stops it. And so because people... Where am I going with this? Sometimes I just start talking. Yes, Kim?
So I went, I worked at the hos- I worked at Phelps County for 16 years. I worked up on the psychiatric unit and now I work in the ER since 2010. The transient population and the homeless population and the drug issue, this is not new. People travel all the time and they do, they go from hospital to hospital, resource to resource. You say build it, they will come, that's not...
I was just quoting the mayor.
Yes, one, that's the farthest thing. There are so many people that the mission has helped, that families have dumped on their doorstep, that they cannot get the resources and they can't get the help. Like, it takes time, it takes, we have CIT meetings to where law enforcement, the mission, senior services, Compass Health, everybody works together to really help the people, to get them back on their feet. And those population that most, I think, are seen as a problem, that's the population that doesn't want help. And so, I mean, the mission, I feel like you guys are kind of attacking the mission, bringing all these people in whenever the mission is the one place that is really trying to help these people. We're gonna start, I know that if the mission wasn't there, we would be reading in the headlines that there was people freezing out in the streets of Ralla. I know that for a fact. There's been people that have been brought in by Ralla PD, that they've been found in dumpsters, almost frozen to death. People come in with frostbite. And everybody is saying, oh, the mission's causing problems, the mission's causing problems. You guys have no idea how many...
Well, I think, again, like we said at the very, very beginning, there is polarizing different opinions here, obviously. And we're all here because we care about Ralla, and we're all here because we do care about people. The people that are experiencing issues from the transient population that are causing nuisance crimes, those are real. They're really impacting their income and their ability to provide for their families. That's not, I mean, we have property owners that are unable to sell their property because of the perceived issues that are there. That's real, whether you have experienced it or you've not experienced it. We've also had people who have experienced business loss because of it. So this is not, that's not made up, just like your testimony's not made up. This is real on both sides. That's why we're having this discussion, and I'm definitely not attacking you. I'm meaning it in a way of, it is perceived in the community and that, that is the conversation that's happening. So I'd rather have it directly with you and with everybody in the room in a very kind and productive manner. So I, again, let's, I feel it getting pretty hostile, and that's not the point of this. It's the point of, yes, you have a different opinion, you have a different perspective, you're a business owner and you've experienced property damage and loss. Is Mr. Juan's, you know, several tens of thousands of dollars not real? That's real, that impacted him and his family, his ability to provide for his family. Just like it's real that these people have nowhere to go. Those are real issues and we care about our community. So how are we going to get back on track with this and, and, and have a discussion? I know that there's some questions, I know you've had your hand up for a while.
Chief Fagan, I just wanna, I have a question about the calls and touching on just the availability of your officers because I know in the past couple of years, they have been spread more thin. I know for a fact personally, we have had our cars broken into multiple times. We did make reports on those the first handful of times, but because the officers couldn't follow up on it and didn't have time to follow up on it, we just stopped reporting it and just started taking that loss. Because if I lose something, I can replace it, but not everyone who is being burglarized or victimized can do that. I, I am thankful that I can, it's not that serious for me. But that, I assure you, is impacting those numbers because I'm no longer calling. I'm also no longer calling as Alliance Club member all the time when I have people that I have to run out of the park because they're sleeping on the benches and they're ruining the park equipment that the children play in and they're shooting up on the slides that I have to go pick up the needles for. So can you talk about how you feel like that's impacting your numbers? Because it's a...
It's, it's very much impacting our numbers. Like I said, we are really having a problem with this particular segment of the homeless population. The ones that don't want help, they just wanna, you know, you can always see them. They're, they're walking on the street, either pulling a suitcase with them, or they got a black trash bag, or they got a backpack on them. You know, I like to call them day walkers. There are people that don't want our help, they just, they're the ones that are causing our crime. I have always said, and I'll say it from the beginning, if you are homeless, for whatever reason, you are an alcoholic, you have a drug problem, you can come to the police department and we can get you the resources that will help you, that will get you out of that. You know, one of the things that the mission's doing and, uh, is this case management program, they had 194 people in 2021 that were actually staying at the mission throughout the year that took part in this case management program. Out of that 194 or eight, I think it was, 107 of them are now in permanent housing. I mean, that, that's not something that, you can say what you want about the mission, but that's, that's fantastic. That's a 55% of rate of getting people in housing when the national average is 20%. Now, I'll answer your question in a minute. Ralla's not the only place being impacted by the, the homeless right now. You know, on the average, out of 10,000 people, for every 10,000 people in the United States, 17 are homeless. I went to a big school down in Florida, where only two chiefs from each state were allowed to go there. And the first question they ask is, what's the main problem all your cities are having right now? Well, every single chief in that room said, the homeless. It's an epidemic, who knows what caused it, but it is an epidemic and it is everywhere. We are trying our best in Ralla. The mission is to serve these people who want help and they're getting them the help. It's that 10% that are, they're driving me nuts, they're drive... I have people come to my office almost every day to talk about the homeless and what are you doing about the homeless? Well, we're doing as much as we can. Being homeless is not against the law. We have a zero tolerance now. If we catch them breaking the law, we arrest them. We know pretty much every one of these homeless that are causing us problems by sight and by name. We'll get a picture from a ring cam or something where somebody's getting broken into, a car's getting broken into or something. And, uh, we'll be able to identify it and we'll go out and we'll get them and we'll arrest them. Unfortunately, like I said, you know, and this is not, nothing that I have any control over or the sheriff has any control over, those kind of people can't stay in jail. I mean, the jails would be overflowing until they end up with a warrant and then, um, get a bond and then they can stay in jail.
The mission started in 2016 and in 2014, we were going to businesses asking people to move their blankets and pillows because they had kept out on their, on their step. Since the mission, since the mission had began, that has lessened with our business. We have not had to do that near as much as we did prior to the mission starting. So it's really been a blessing to the community because we've got a lot of them off the downtown streets, literally. That was, they would make their beds there in front of the doors of the stores.
Yeah, they are unfortunately, they are still doing it. And we try to move them along when it happens, but, you know, you know, one of the things that we were having a problem with, and I can't say that the mission is working with us better now than they ever have. They have that pavilion at the side of their building. That's where everybody likes to hang out. Not only the people that are actually part of the mission, but the people that have been kicked out of the mission that can no longer be there. That's a problem. So the mission is gonna be putting a fence up from the corner of their building, down that drive to the front of their building. And the only way you're gonna be able to get to that pavilion in that area is by going through the mission. Which hopefully is gonna stop the people that are causing us the problems that have been kicked out of the mission but are still hanging out there, it's gonna stop them from going there. We're trying to make it where, we get the people off of downtown because I, you know, I, I work straight days, but I go out at night and drive around and let me tell you something, you drive around at night downtown, it's scary. I mean, they're, they're just, they're everywhere. They can't block off the alley because that's an official roadway for the fire department, but they're gonna put it right up against that alley where you can't get to the... Oh, no, 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 that's, can't do that, sir. We're doing everything we can with that. We have a task force where... We're doing everything we can with that unfortunately. I, I just wanna get something thrown out in the room right here now. I'm not against the Second Amendment. I don't know, who the heck started that rumor? I'm probably one of the biggest Second Amendment guys there is. All my kids carry guns, my wife carries a gun, I carry a gun. But they passed the Second Amendment Preservation Act in the state of Missouri. It's the law right now. There's two parts of that law that are terrible. The first one is, we had to take all of our people out of the drug task forces. Because the drug task forces work with the DEA and we are no longer allowed to do anything with federal agencies according to that law. If I work with the DEA and we do a search warrant and get 1,000 pounds of cocaine and 15 guns, I get fined $50,000 for every gun that was seized there under this new law. That is my problem with that law. As far as the Second Amendment goes, I think everyone in this room should be able to carry a gun. And you can, state of Missouri, it's an open carry state. But, uh, you know, so we're really, we, we had to leave that task force, which... Not if it involves a gun, no. If there's any chance that it's gonna involve a gun, even if we, say for instance, work with the Forest Service, they're a federal agency and we go do a homeless camp and we make arrests and out of that we get three or four guns, $50,000 a gun that we're gonna get fined. And it's a third-party lawsuit, which means you don't even have to be involved. When that law started, I got a, I got a open record from Kansas City, Missouri, from a law firm asking for copies of every one of my gun cases. Because they were looking to sue us for every gun that we've been involved with, with federal agencies. We're trying, we're trying to get what we call a clarification act, which means these parts of the law, we don't think that's what was intended, would you clarify, a judge? But it, the way the courts work, it might be a year or two. In the meantime, we had to completely withdraw from the task force, myself and the sheriff, both. We had to pull our people from the South Central Drug Task Force because they have agents in St. Louis DEA and Springfield DEA. And even if we weren't involved in it, if St. Louis DEA made a case where they seized a bunch of guns, we were gonna get sued because we were part of the task force.
It, it actually is much better this way. So we pulled our resources and we have a local unit that is not, it was a nine-county task force. So our people, instead of focusing here, were down in West Plains. They were doing nothing for us, even though we were, we were the two that were carrying the burden for this task force. So we have pulled out of that, formed our own, and they are, they are doing everything within Phelps County now. They've made some really, really good cases. Yes, and, and it goes along with the property crimes unit that we've got in town. So we have our units that are tied to the task force and then I have two that are assigned to the property crimes. They do everything together. So there's five people that go out, so if it's a property crime, drug guys go with them because it goes hand in hand. If you find carloads of stolen goods, you're gonna find dope, it goes hand in hand. They're stealing to, to do their habit, so...
They still do, it's just the state of Missouri now made that illegal.
We, we, we still have our interdiction unit, but they are not, they are not in no way, shape, or form doing any kind of drug or gun, gun cases.
And we do have undercover agents with the new task... And we do have undercover agents with the new task force we just formed ourselves. They have no federal nexus at all. They're just working in Phelps County.
Chief, would you care to, you explain to me about the panhandling? And I think that this is where a lot of the 10% are able to function.
Right.
Would you explain to everyone what you explain to me and what you-
Panhandling. We've all seen it. Get off the highway, they're standing on the corner. You get out of Walmart, they're standing on the corner. The United States Supreme Court has said that panhandling is a First Amendment right. We can no longer stop a panhandler. We used to have an ordinance against it and we would arrest the people for soliciting. Now, the Supreme Court said it's a First Amendment right. There is nothing we can do about it.
Except stop giving them money.
So that is not-
Yeah, they would stand there if they weren't given money.
The Supreme Court said you cannot do panhandling. But they also ruled in another case that aggressive panhandling, where you're at the corner, let's say you're driving up and you start doing this as an harassment, that is not legal.
Well, see, and, and if you would have let me finish my statement, sir.
That don't happen, did you?
Let me finish my statement. We do arrest for aggressive panhandling. If you're banging on windows, if you're blocking a car, that is a disturbance and we arrest you for the disturbance. St. Louis County Police tried to pass an aggressive panhandling ordinance. It won for about three weeks. It cost them $450,000 when they were sued for it, so. Yeah, but we are in the state of Missouri and we have to do what the Supreme Court says. I'm not going to argue with you, okay? Well, the law affected us working with federal agencies on getting guns. Right, and we're still doing that.
So we're running everything through the state now. We're not doing federal cases with those, we're running them all through the state. Yep, and I, and I want you all to understand, here's the predicament we're in. He's saying that we have a zero tolerance. Well, the problem is, it's not the fact that they're, we're not doing anything. So our jail has 196 beds. We're averaging 210 people a day. 25 of those, 25% of those, so 52 people are on some type of psychiatric medication. We have four holding cells, which are isolation cells. We can only hold four people that are out of control. We cannot put these people in general population. They will get hurt, these people, where there's 40 to 50 people per pod. You cannot stick somebody that's not mentally able to be in there with them. We are in the process of adding an additional add-on to our facility, which we're going to bring us up to 360 beds. That's a year and a half away. So when he says, you know, that they issue a summons and, and I know people get frustrated here all the time. Why are these people back out on the street? Why are they back on the street? We can't hold anymore people. We have, we are busting at the seams in the jail right now. We are, are going to get up to 15 isolation cells in our jail with this new add-on. So it will help out. But until that time happens, we have to bring people in and let people out as fast as we can to make our population stay down to where we don't have people laying on every piece of furniture we have.
How much of a problem is that from people outside of Phelps County?
I, I don't know because we don't book them in that way. There's no way of searching that. I know that our, our mental health has gone up in the last years, but that's due to the drug problem. I mean, our overdoses are skyrocketing. I mean, it's just a fact and I don't know, it doesn't, doesn't correlate to whether they're homeless or not. It's just an epidemic. So, I mean, it's not that the law enforcement isn't doing what we need to do. We're doing what we have to work with and trying to provide the best service that we're able to provide.
Sheriff, it was mentioned earlier that in the March 2014, there seems to be, I don't know if it's a growing number of homeless-
Well, there's a, there's a national organization, which are called the Grain Bowl People.
Yeah, I remember.
So-
Kids in the same organization.
Absolutely, that's the same organization. So when you see six busloads of people heading through Ralla, they're heading to the National Force. And they set up-
They don't tend to stay there permanently.
They stay there for months at a time.
They have to have permits and they can't be out there and if they're there for more than two weeks, they're removed.
They, yeah, they do.
But there are certain areas within the-
But they just bounce, they move, they, they'll go to where there's springs. So they'll just bounce from spring to spring to spring to spring to spring. And then they just move on after that. I mean, they tend to be very clean. I mean, they'll come, they'll pick up their messes, they, they leave it like they left when they got there. But, I mean, they have issues.
Is there any, is there any, are there any people living out there outside of the-
There are, there are local people that live out there, yes.
I've been very providing, I've had my hand over about-
I didn't see you.
Be rude. Maybe you're more likely to be rude. I got a question here. It's going to be both the sheriff and the chief. Do you really think I need that?
Well, yes.
All right.
I have a question here for both of you and I want to preface it with a little of my background. I've been involved in law enforcement and security management since 1977. So I know a little bit about what I'm talking about. I'm retired now, of course. My question is, and this is not a sharpshooting question. Chief, you have been magnificent tonight in explaining your situation with the homeless shelter. This young lady from the homeless shelter has been very good in explaining the necessity and the process which she goes through. We all feel that we need, we know we need a homeless shelter. However, that's only half of the problem that exists in Phelps County and the state of Missouri and the country of the United States. The other half is the infestation of our parks, our railway overpasses, our public areas, derelict buildings with hardcore homeless people.
I'm not going to argue with you at all.
What are we, what are we doing about that, Chief?
Okay. Sure, go ahead. Here. This woman just retired, but she was in charge of building and codes.
Code enforcement. I was the code enforcement inspector for Ralla. I'm sorry, okay. I was in this job for nine years. Before that, I did animal control for nine years. I had the same problems overlap into each department. But I don't know if you all realize, in January, when I retired, for about four months before that, I put together a list of derelict properties. And I'm glad you brought it up because I'm trying to impress on everybody. If we get rid of the things that will entice people to come here and that is, these buildings are just boarded up. Some of them were not boarded up. They gave, they go into the basements and as the chief explained, there's two of them didn't part of a fire. They could have killed people doing this. So the ordinance went through and it is a fine now. These property owners are being made accountable for these properties. And I believe over half of them are either going to be demoed, fixed up, or permanently boarded up until they can sell them and tear them down.
All right, what about the railway overpasses, which are railway property and they are-
That's right.
They are enforceable.
They are.
There are trespass regulations, trespass laws. The public parks?
The public parks, we and my officers have been advised that no one can be in the public parks when the public parks are closed, okay? If a public park is open, I can't order somebody out of the park because they're homeless. But when they're closed, they get trust, they get arrested for trespassing on that because they've all been, like I said, the people that are our problem people, we know them all by name. 99% of them have been trespassed from various parks and stuff. So when they go back, you know, we charge them. As far as a railroad overpass goes, the 72 extension, where it goes over the railroad, that bridge is very unusual. It kind of goes up, but then it goes flat. And it's about six foot tall and it's probably half the size of this room. They had a homeless city built there. They want the businesses, they got pellets and they actually built little homes and everything. The reason we found out they were there was because in the wintertime, we saw smoke coming out from underneath there and somebody finally went and looked. But when we found this out, I got two city dump trucks up there and we cleaned the place out. I had people come complaining to me, you threw away my clothes, you did this, you did that. And I said, okay, fine, come on in here, we'll take a report, but you're going to get charged with trespassing because you were on railroad property. Well, they decided not to make a report and they would leave. But we have notified the railroad on that and they advised us that they were going to keep an eye on it. And because we have to have a victim and the railroad is the victim and we have to have a victim tell us that they want to prosecute and we will arrest them for it.
It's their job to enforce that.
Yes, it is, but we helped them with it.
Okay, what about the-
For instance, we had a, we had a city council person that pointed out where a bunch of homeless were sleeping. And it was a mess. We went there, we kicked them all out of there. Well, they left all their trash there. And what we were determining, who owns it? Does Meeks own it? Does the city own it? Well, come to find out, it's railroad property that they were on. Well, the railroad's not going to clean that up. So the city's going to take it upon themselves tomorrow morning at 8:00, we're going to go there and we're going to throw all that trash away. So we're trying as much as we can to get these people. You see a lot of tents around the city. If they're in a park, we will automatically tell them they got to go somewhere else. We cannot take people or kick people off of private property unless the owner of that property tells us they want them off the property. If that's the case, trust me, we don't have any problem telling them to move along. While I'm here, if you own a business in town, we have these nice little signs made up. You put it in the back of your business. What it says is, "The Ralla Police Department officers are authorized by the owner of this premises to advise any person to leave the premises or you will be arrested for trespassing." This is considered a trespassing notice. Usually what we have to do legally is we have to say, you're no longer allowed here. If you come back, you'll be arrested for trespassing. That's the notice that we give them. But with the sign, we don't have to give them notice. If they're, if they're there, we can arrest them for trespassing. We give these away for free to anybody who wants them. But with all this being said, and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So if I was to put that in my business, even though we called three times last year and we did not show up, we'll show up this time?
Yes, we will show up. This is something we just started doing six months ago.
Yes, we've had to keep our doors locked and my daughter was almost accused of leaving her building at 10:00 at night the other day by somebody. I'm concerned for the safety of my child.
I understand.
At Urban Roots. It's right next to Alex's Pizza, right in downtown.
That was a location where we had the Life Changers Church right down there, which is, was the big problem we had. Yes?
Hey Chief, I got a question.
Along with the bridges, parks, what about MoDOT property?
MoDOT has, see, the problem with MoDOT is, and we've tried to work with MoDOT. One of our biggest problems is when you get off at the 186 right there where Steak and Shake is, the solicitor's there. They litter, they do all kinds of things. I actually went to MoDOT and said, help us out here. Can I put a sign there that says, if you're going to give, give to a local charity? They wouldn't do it. They said, we don't do anything about the solicitors. They're worried about the law that they're going to get prosecuted for running these people out. And like I said, I have to have a victim in order to, you know, I could arrest them for the littering because they leave all their trash there. You know, I stopped, I went the other day down by Walmart and there was a man and a gal and they had three kids with them. And they were, had the signs, please help homeless. And I stopped and I said, okay, first off, we're going to take your kids because it's not safe for them to be here. And then to come find out, they had a nice, real nice car, they all got in their car and they left. So.
They got cell phones and separate kids, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
When you give for everybody, when you give to one of those people, you give them that dollar, that dollar goes to a drug dealer. That drug dealer uses it for ammunition to gun down our cops, our firefighters and citizens of this community, the business owner. Don't give to, right, give to the charities, but that's where that dollar goes. It goes to buy ammunition to gun the rest of the town.
Will you look at what you give back to the zombies? Yeah, oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
We, we could go on all night, okay? So we, we want to get back to the issue at hand. I, I might just respond to Kathleen's comment about the nuisance. I understand abandoned houses and all that. All of mine has helping, has had downtown and in Ralla. And mine is not abandoned property. So they are affecting any place, every place, not just those places nuisance. It is downtown Ralla. It's almost every day with me, I find somebody sleeping here, doing that or the other. So it's not just that, it's just the whole thing, okay? Let's get Tina.
Hello, I'm Tina Davis. I've been the executive director at Grace for 11 years. And we believe it's important to address how Grace has gotten to its current stance on assisting homeless and transients. So Grace has been in Ralla for 21 years. At that time, transients or homeless individuals were referred to Grace and the Ralla Police Department. Grace would do the intake, RPD would do a police check, and the ministerial alliance would foot the bill. The types of assistance that we normally provided was bus tickets to a shelter or family, vehicle fuel, or a motel in certain circumstances. So eventually, the ministerial alliance was unable to foot the bill, so we took on the financial burden. Numbers began to grow and then a church in town took over the financial cost. Now bear in mind that Grace's purpose is to assist permanent residents of Ralla, Newburgh, and Edgar Springs with emergency needs. Our clients are required to provide proof of residence through utility bill, lease agreement, or something like that. We started seeing more individuals wanting to stay in the area and asking for help with IDs using the mission as their address. They were also needing assistance with weekend food and weekend motels. Add to that, the RPD was having more difficulty with the police checks to being short, because of being short-staffed. From 2016 to 2018, we went from 39 bus tickets per year to 90 bus tickets per year. The ones we were helping with bus tickets were returning in a week or two for yet another ticket. Some would say they were leaving and then they'd not show up to pick up the non-refundable bus ticket. Our policy on bus tickets was a one-time assist to get them to a safe shelter, family, or friends. We are a very fiscally conservative organization and take any financial waste seriously. So in 2021, we stopped doing any assistance for transients homeless and referred them to the mission. We believe it's important to note that when a client comes in needing assistance, we do a case net study to make sure they're not currently engaged in illegal activities. Now, this would be a felony. For example, financially supporting a client who was just arrested for drugs is in essence purchasing drugs for them. We've found regardless of the individual's situation, whether it be homeless, transient, or permanent resident, it's imperative that the client realizes they must have accountability for their own actions. Showing up for appointments on time, calling if you're running late, prioritizing base needs above wants. It sounds simple, but a lot of them struggle. Grace has never refused to work with any agencies when assisting a client. However, we have, we are in a written partnership with no one. We also take no federal funds or state funds. Donations come from private, local individuals, businesses, and churches. I'll leave you with this thought. When people assume that their basic needs are guaranteed, hard work becomes neither a necessity for survival or a means to escape their current situation. I did want to address a couple of things that was said. I know you had mentioned that that wasn't happening anymore, that people were coming into the area from out of town.
No, I said that other departments aren't dropping them off anymore.
Okay, okay. I did want to say that just a couple of weeks ago, there was a situation where I got a call from someone that they were in a hospital in Camden Town and the hospital paid for a taxi to bring them here. So we still have them coming in that are coming from other areas. Now, whether it be a medical situation or not, it's still a situation where we have them coming from, from not Ralla. I think the other one was the paying for IDs and bus tickets. That's, that's good to hear because that was something that we were, we were having to overcome. But like I said, we, we stopped that in 2021. We just didn't see any, any success from any of that. And that's our purpose, is, is to get them over and above a short-term crisis. So has anybody got any questions? Yes.
Thank you. There has, there has been several references this evening regarding getting an ID and the mission supplying or helping them get it. I'm getting the impression is that you're allowing them to use your address. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I thought by giving an address, it would have to be a permanent address. And it doesn't, to me, it doesn't seem like the honest thing to do. It seems to me that it's up to them to get their address.
Right. No, that was an agreement that we had worked out with the DMV and there, it's, that is allowed, absolutely. And so we help people get their ID because you can't get a job without ID. You can't get housing without ID. You can't do anything without an ID.
But it also allows them to vote and do other, and get other services. It just doesn't, it seems like a loophole to me, that's all. Thank you.
I'm, oh, okay.
I was just wondering if anyone, I guess on the panel, knows how many people are in poverty in Phelps County? What percentage of the people here are in poverty?
That's what I'm saying with these gas prices.
Ask this guy, the last stats that we had, 7,290 people, or 16.3% of the residents of Phelps County can't afford food right now.
I said through our last stats, 7,290 people, or 16.3% of all the residents of Phelps County can't afford food right now for their families.
That's nearly one in five people in the county, right? So- What's the biggest risk factor of becoming homeless? Is it poverty? What are we doing to address that? I just don't think it's fair to ask the police to try to police ourselves out of the situation when clearly the issue is poverty. The police can't do anything about that. We don't need handcuffs, we need affordable housing. And when one company, when one company owns a monopoly of the land in this area and then charges double rent upfront, it makes it very difficult to get ahead, to live. I mean, something needs to be done about the housing costs. That's literally what we're talking about here. People need affordable housing.
There are five reasons for homelessness in this town. And one of them is the lack of a living wage and affordable housing. That is a problem in our town here and, but I was gonna, that's one thing I was gonna say though, is that-
For, not, and you would need an ID.
That's why we have to get, that's why we give them the ID so they can go and get a job. And we don't just give, if somebody comes in and they're strung out on meth, we don't give them an ID. We don't help them get an ID. Who we help get IDs are people that are in this program that are wanting to go to work, that are wanting to get into housing. Those are the people that we get IDs for. Those are the people that we help get copies of their birth certificates. Because those are the people that want help and we are here to help them. Like I said, you can't put all the homeless in one basket. It's not- 80%, 90% of those people are homeless by things that are outside of their own- You know, the number one reason for homeless in this country right now is bankruptcy due to medical bills, believe it or not. Number one reason for homeless in the United States. Yes?
Hello? Hey, excuse me. My name's Carl McElroy and I've suffered from having my scooter stolen out of my yard. But let me tell you something, I was homeless three years ago. And the way the economy's going, everybody laughed about the gas prices and all that, but we got big things coming our way. So everybody walk with the Lord and I just wanna praise the mission because as far as the ID goes, I didn't have an ID. I didn't, I had a place to go, but I didn't wanna infringe on my elderly father. So a Christian lady picked me up and brought me over here. And I was riding my bike clear out to FedEx from right downtown. And then some, and then I bought a scooter and it got stolen on Thanksgiving Day. Yeah, but the ID allowed me, the residents allowed me to be able to go out and fill out applications. I got to cut my fingernails and look presentable. And it was truly a blessing to me and I came down here. Anybody that knows me wouldn't believe that I'm even down at a city council meeting in a courthouse. But I gave my life to the Lord and I've been straight for three years and I thank the mission. I thank Ashley Brooks. I thank you. I thank everybody, so. The homeless ain't gonna go away the way things going anyway, you know, so. All you can do is what you can do.
Just questions for Ashley. So what's your stance on the people flying signs out there?
Thank you for asking. We stand firmly against that for the record.
Panhandling.
Panhandling, yeah. So one of the things that we try to do, because I, panhandling is, I don't, I hope I don't make anybody mad. I think it's pretty degrading when people have to do that though. And so I would never, part of our mission is to empower people. And so we would never want someone to have to degrade themselves, to go out to beg for money, for food, or anything like that. So that's part of what we're doing, is we're providing food and shelter and stuff so people don't have to go out and panhandle. And so not every community is as blessed as we are in Rolla, but we really are blessed in Rolla. And so people don't need to panhandle in our community. And so we kept hearing at the mission, I would get phone calls, emails, people would stop by and they were really upset about all the panhandling. And so, and as I'm driving through town, I lived in Rolla for over 10 years, and I noticed an increase too. And so we were like, "All right, what is going on here?" So me and my staff, we went out and we actually spoke to the people that were panhandling. And we asked them, "What are you, first of all, are you even homeless? Why aren't you in the case management program at the mission? And what are you using this money for?" First, most of them were not homeless. They were using money for, some said gas, some said hotels, others declined to say, some said cigarettes. But we actually have reached out to several business owners, including MoDOT. We advocated to them to, to try to get some panhandling signs out that, and we even, we even said, like, "We'll pay for them" because we were getting so much heat from that. And so we created these signs and we're putting some up outside of Kroger and Price Chopper. I've got a request into the guy at Walmart and I am still pushing for MoDOT to let me put a sign out there. Encouraging people to give to local charities instead. And we even set up a website with all the local charities that help people in need and Grace is on that list as well as Russell House and all these amazing organizations that actually help provide those needs so people don't need to panhandle in our community. Yes, sir.
But you stop at- You, you stop at one of them places. I run a business. I have a farm and I could use some help. I say, "Sir, would you like to go with me? I have something for you to do. I, I will pay you." And, "No, thank you." So a lot of them is doing it as a business rather than because they're in need. But you try to hire one of them and see how far you get. You, you won't get, they'll tell you, "No, I'm, I'm not, I'm not willing to work," so. I, I'm the most giving person in the world and, but I'm not gonna stop at a stop sign and give somebody money that's standing out there with their hand out whenever you offer them a job and they don't wanna work, so that-
I, I actually own a business and I've hired 20 or 30 people at the very minimum from the mission and worked them like dogs. And I can personally tell you that. And not just me, multiple business owners in this community from roofers on up, which I got a bunch of buddies who also own companies who have worked, people from the mission like dogs from morning until, till night for, you know, not hardly $12 an hour or $15 an hour, and they have worked. And I can personally tell you, at least 20 or 30, myself, me, not counting the other people. There is people in this community who love people, who get out here, like the chief was talking about crime, right? So if the, if, if you believe that the homeless people are bad, would you say bad? Does it make sense if the bad people are in jail just to throw them out of the jail? Why would you possibly take the people from the mission and throw them on the streets if you think they're bad? That doesn't make sense.
Ain't nobody saying they're bad.
He, he asked for the, he was talking specifically to panhandling.
I'm just saying, in the-
How long did those people that you picked up at the mission and you take out and work, how long did they stay with you?
They're still with me, some of them are.
Well, God bless you.
Okay. I, I know that we still have questions, but we're almost at two hours. We definitely got off track. We definitely had a lot of really great conversation. I think this served the purpose of alerting the community that there is a problem, that there is something. And obviously, again, very polarizing, and this was not about the mission, this is about, again, but this was about the fact that there is a zoning ordinance currently to address the unhoused issue in our community that will most definitely impact for the good or the bad. If you're a small business owner and your livelihood relies on your business income, you might wanna pay attention. Whether it's for or against, this conversation is being had right now with planning and zoning and with city council. The zoning ordinance were left here. If you are a business owner and you are against having any shelter-type services in your commercially zoned area, we do have legal petitions to where you can petition against that. That does not mean that we are against unhoused people and that does not mean that we are against not so- Many of us sitting here who own businesses, who are against this ordinance, I know personally have housed unhoused people and have personally donated to the mission. So we cannot group, that we're talking about not grouping people together. If you own a business and you're concerned for the success or for the safety of your employees at night, or whatever it is, we do, that's, that's the conversation that's being had. And I think a bigger conversation, it sounds like the mission has done a lot of great things. We've heard that. We've heard that they're getting IDs. We've heard that they're taking people off the streets from freezing at night. Like, that's amazing stuff and we commend you for that. We're all humanitarians and we all help people and we're a very generous community. It still isn't, not mission-wise, but we still, mission and, and other organizations still have an issue of the 10%. And it's a community spread issue. We're all touched by it. Everybody just talked about how they are. So whether it's how do we help these people, or how do we protect ourselves, like, that's the conversation that needs to be had. Again, we got off track tonight, but- Yeah, how, yeah, go ahead.
So we have, yeah, we have 45 spots, but on average about 38 are filled. Also, I really think it's super important, I wanna put out there, the downtown location, we've been trying to get out of there for a long time. So for, um, I think it was back in 2018, I believe, we submitted a proposal to the city of Rolla for a piece of land that they had had for sale for like 14 or 15 years. And there had never been any, there had never been any offers on this land. It was just this little, like, slice of land between, it was just down Sharp Road, it still is, between the interstate and the railroad tracks. And it wasn't around, like, there was the animal shelter there, but the animal shelter was moving. The location, there was within walking distance, so people could still go to work. They could go to Four Rivers Health Center. And so we submitted a proposal to the city to move, to see if, like, can we start talking about us potentially purchasing this land? And we never heard any official word, but the unofficial word on that was no. So 74, so I don't know if you got one of these packets, but please look through that. So last year, 74% of our donations came from our community. I'm the, oh, sorry, I'm Ashley Brooks. I'm the executive director of the Rolla Mission. So 74% of our donations came from our community. And then it has a breakdown of the other ones. It was 2021, so less than 1% became from events. 2% came from federal government grants and then 9% was from foundation grants and local government grants. So anyway, so that was the first time we've tried to move. Because like I said, we're in the corner, we're in the bottom, we're in half of a church basement. And so we really wanted to be able to move out of our current location. And so, and we were listening to our community and we're trying to be good neighbors and we're trying to respond to you all. And so we were trying to move. And so that was the first time. And then we had spoke to the people that own the Howard Johnson Hotel and that didn't work out. And then we were trying to move to that Jordan Motors property, which is not happening for the record. And so, and that was on the outskirts of town. And so we've trying to find a location that is accessible for our people so they could still access the resources that they need to be successful, like, they can walk to work, they can go to their doctor's appointments, they can meet with all their caseworkers and stuff. But we, we don't want to infringe on anybody. We want to be good neighbors. We wanna be good community members. And so if you have a solution for that, I would love to talk to you, so please come and talk to me. We're not, we don't have millions of dollars. So, but we are open to that and have been for some time and have expressly said that for a long time.
Um, we had, oh, sorry, sorry Pam. We had a really quick question back here in the back that wanted to know if you're a personal citizen and you've been affected, or you, you know, if you're not a business owner, we have the legal petitions for the business owner, just addressing a question. If you're a personal citizen and you've been affected, positive or negative, this is what this is about. The call to action is to you. We're definitely, I'm not your leader, Dale's not your leader on this. Like, we just wanted to facilitate this conversation on both sides. So the call to action is contact your city council member, explain to them what's going on. If you want to get involved, get involved. Go to the city council meetings, call the mayor, email, whatever it is that you're going to say, for or against, but it-
Are they going to answer that? Because I've sent a letter, I've called, I've gone through everything I can think of. I am tired of this in my backyard.
Right.
I live with it every day. What?
Vote differently.
The county, so the county residents, and the sheriff is here, but the county residents, I mean, we're still, especially and I know I don't mean to keep saying business owners, that's just what the proposed ordinance is currently going to impact. But the, if you own a business in the city, and obviously we frequent in the city and we spend money in the city, but we're county residents, you still have a voice at city council. And I, I don't know, and I don't wanna speak out of turn here, so somebody else who knows better than me. We're still a member of the community, so if you have written- I would encourage you to- I would encourage you to get together as a group. I mean, get together as a group and do what you need to do. Also, I would encourage you to go to city council meetings and speak directly to the city council meeting where they have to address you at that, in that venue. She said the Phelps County Commission meetings are open to the public.
I had heard there was a proposal for a 500-bed facility on Sharp Road.
She had heard that there is a proposal for a 500-bed facility on Sharp Road. We have not heard that. Okay. No? Okay.
That wasn't-
Not you. Yes, Pam.
I wanna ask Ash, Ashley, first of all, kudos to you for doing this because I know this is tough, but I want to know your take on bringing in people from out of town. How do you feel about that? Because I, I know you've been on some ads or in talking on radio shows previously to this year. Like, I think there's one, someone was showing me in 2019 or something where you were advertising that they could come to the mission and it was- where you were advertising that they could come to the mission, and it was, it was on a KMOX radio show. So I, I just, so I was gonna ask...
Did you hear that ad?
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Oh, would you please play that?
Yeah.
So, my, I want to ask you specifically, how you feel about bringing people in from out of town, because I was, we had a meeting at our store one night, and, and we were told that if we just stuck with Phelps County, we could get control of this, um, the situation. So, how, how do you feel about bringing people from other areas?
Yeah, so like I said in the very beginning, we want people to be where they're the most successful. Sorry, that's...
So what does that mean to me?
Yeah, so we want people to be where they're the most successful. So they're going to be the most successful where they have the most resources. So if they're not from our community, they're not gonna have any resources, and they're not gonna be successful. And so that's not gonna benefit them at all, and it's not gonna benefit our community. And so we do not, that's why we ask that question whenever people are asking if we have space available. Are you from Phelps County? Do you have a job here? Do you have someone that you can stay with? And if not, then we don't allow them to stay, because it's, it's not, it's counter to our mission, it's not gonna help... I don't know what that's about.
It was, uh, it was at the KMOX Voice of St. Louis, and you were discussing the mission services, on the Charlie Brennan Show.
I've never been on. Yeah, okay, I remember doing that. Yeah, that was not in St. Louis, though. Yeah, that was out of Salem. Oh, well, yeah, no, well, no. Yeah, that was an interview that they had done. I wish I could remember the specifics of that, it's been a few years, but no, we would never do that. We would not want to bring people from St. Louis here, because that's going to overwhelm us, that's going to overwhelm our community, that's going to overwhelm our resources. And so, we have such a high successful rate, because we are able, because we keep it to what we can help and who we can help. And so, yeah, that interview, admittedly, that sounds really bad, but I don't remember the specifics of it. Had I, I will say, though, without, again, remembering the specifics, if somebody said, "Would you advertise to St. Louis about the Ralla Mission?", I would not. So, there we go. And our 80% rate from Phelps County at the mission proves that.
I'm not disputing you, but the 80% you said is just by them saying that they are from Ralla. And if any of these people have been to any other shelters, most of them require you to be from their area. So they kind of get trained in, yes, we're from this area, because we want to stay.
That's a good point. So, again, if somebody came in and they had said, like, "Oh, I'm from Ralla," and they were just saying that, so on that first day in case management, that would come out really quickly. "Okay, so you said that you came here because you were working at this place. Well, you're not working there, because we're trying, we're contacting them, and they're saying you're not working there, because we need your schedule." And so then we would say, like, "Okay, clearly you've lied, let's get you a bus ticket to back where you were from." Again, that's not happened, but in that scenario, that's what would happen.
Here's one of the problems we have. One of my officers just sent me a text saying that, within the last hour, a van dropped 10 people off at Bueller Park from the Life Changers Church. I mean, this, this church is killing us right now. You know, they're located in Vichy, Missouri, so I don't have a whole lot of things that I can do about it. When they were in Ralla, we, we ended up arresting the guy in charge of it and everything else, and that's why they moved out. They're not even in Phelps County anymore. They're out there in Mary's County. But, they keep dropping their people off here in Phelps County, so it's an uphill battle, and we're trying the best we can to deal with it.
And the families pay a lot of money to get these people to Life Changers, thinking they're gonna make a big difference in their lives. And it's, it's basically all a hoax.
I'd like to do, say one more thing. Yes, sir? Right, right. You know, some of the problems we have here being in Ralla is, and I'll say, for instance, Greyhound Bus. Greyhound Bus knows that if they got some person on their bus attacked and up or out of control, they drop them off at Burger King up there off of Kings Highway, and tell them, "Either call the police or start walking that way, there's a place called the Mission you can go to." Well, when Burger King shut down, I got Greyhound Bus to move away from there and go down to Pulaski County. But, now that Burger King's back, they're gonna go back to being a regular bus stop there at the Burger King. Oh, if, if you can, I would really appreciate it. Yeah, Burger King, I think gets, gets a stipend from them for being a bus stop there at their location, so... Yes?
Like affordable housing, things that get people into poverty, um, low wages, that sort of stuff, inflation. We need to be looking at the public health prevention side. Police respond to crime, so it's not on our police to prevent a lot of the things that we're talking about, they are a response.
But if you're, if you're talking about the 10% that are causing the problems, that's what we're here to respond to. Well, absolutely, there does. But, the community needs to call. If, if, I, every place I go, people are asking me what I need, what I can do about the homeless. It, it's a very small percentage of people, but you all need to call. If they shoplifting, call. Trespassing, call. You have got to call. From, from Krogers, all the time. I mean... Well, I, I know that, but there, if you don't call, there's no documentation. Well, because if you don't, if you don't do the paperwork, nobody will ever know what's going on. It has got to be documented. And I know it's frustrating. It is frustrating. I, I understand that. Well, here, so here, here's, if you were to call every time, chief is going to assign somebody in that area. If we don't know that an area is being an issue, we can't move manpower to that issue. But walking down the street's not a crime. Breaking into your, breaking into your car is. It is a vicious cycle. It, it is. And I, and I understand that, we have the same problem in the county. But, you have got to make the phone calls.
I think we probably need to...
I understand that, but it takes just a minute to make a phone call.
We probably need to wrap this up.
We have to have that.
Uh, I do have a question. When you talk about affordable housing, what do you mean affordable housing? I'm sorry? But whose fault is that? Yes? What is, what is... Hello, can you hear me now? What is affordable wages? What is affordable housing? Okay. But keep in mind, when you do all these things, I, I, I find it interesting, people talk to me, and they say, you know, "We're for this, we're for that," et cetera, et cetera. I ask them, okay, if you're for the homeless, okay, which is, who's not for the homeless, okay? But, but on the other hand, how much are you willing to give? You work at the hospital. You, I assume you make a decent wage. How much are you willing to commit of your wage? You willing to commit 10, 15, 20% of it to take care of the homeless situation? The, Jesus says, "The poor you always gonna have with you," okay? So, affordable housing? What is affordable housing? So whose fault is that? Okay. As we close, uh, the city council is gonna have a, a good job, big job, of creating, of creating an ordinance, okay? The reason this ordinance is being drafted is because originally, the shelter was not really regulated, was not in a, at a proper setting. Therefore, the city decided that we need to find a zoning that will accommodate the homeless, the, the, the shelter. Do you want, is it a homeless shelter? Is it a soup kitchen? What is it? They, they could not identify it. So now they want to get a zoning, and we, some of us at least have concern it's going to be in C1, C2, or C3. So the city, so you need to get your petition over here if you're concerned about the zoning, because once the zoning is approved, it will never be unzoned. So keep in mind, with the zoning that you have proposed for C1, C2, C3, then potentially, you could have several homeless shelters right next to your business. So you gotta keep in mind, the main thing is to find a zoning that will regulate everything concerned, okay? It's your city, make sure you speak up, okay? Thank you for coming.